All right, with that, I would like to call to order the regular in our school board meeting of January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Um, before we even get into agenda review, we we are pushing back our next meeting, which was initially scheduled for January twelfth to January seventeenth at six thirty. I want to make sure that everyone who's online now has that information that it is updated on the S A U seventy calendar. Uh, but that is our last budget meeting at which the board will vote to adopt a budget that will go forward. For town meeting day for the town's votes. With that, let me move down to uh the agenda review. I have uh one thing I need to um actually subtract. Does anyone have anything else they want to add edit? Jay, do you have anything? No, I just Ryan had got in touch with me and actually I'll let Jay and Sean make sure I'm understanding this correctly, but it sounds like we can drop uh, I'm guessing both of the uh both in executive session and the nine B, the approval new hire, because it's a return on leave of absence. Is that right? Okay, so we can strike. And is there any need for executive session that we know of? Does anyone have? We have a question about that particular. Okay, yeah. Well, we'll come to that if I get to it, but I don't think we need the nine B there. Uh. Any others from the board? Okay, not seeing any. Let's go to our next item, which is public comments. This is the period of the meeting when uh public is invited to uh speak if they have any issues that are not uh currently on the other items in the agenda. And we do ask that you uh take two minutes time if you have something that you would like to address again, something that's not on your. I see one hand up still and that's uh Mark. I don't know if um that's from earlier, but uh go ahead. If you've got something to say.
Thanks, Tom. I I've been new comment.
Okay.
I just wanted, I wanted to share a comment.
Sorry, Mark, just uh name, name and address.
Sorry, thank you. Sorry, uh Mark Aquila on New Boston Road.
Yep.
Thanks. Um, I would like to just share a comment in support of Sean Gonya as the principal at Marion Cross. Um, over the past couple of years, I've had numerous issues or sorry, numerous questions uh about school-wide issues at Marion Cross. Uh, drop off, uh the septic, uh the safety at the crosswalks, and every single time I've been able to have a discussion, wish on on that topic. Um, he's very visible at drop off. He's in front of the school every day. Um, I've also emailed him to schedule time, uh just because that my schedule does change and so does his. Um, I found him very approachable, uh and I've got to say, I was, I was quite embarrassed on behalf of our town uh when I found out that someone was calling his old school uh to seemingly try to dig up dirt on him. Um, it's easy to make things up in our heads, uh and instead I would urge anyone, if you have questions, please reach out to the person that you think is responsible. Um, and I I've just been very pleased with Sean's interactions and his responsiveness. Um, that that's really all I have to say. Uh, Jamie, I'm excited about the septic update. Um, and then lastly, for for uh for just for all you guys, thanks for everything that you do for our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks very much for your comments, Mark.
Yep.
All right, I see Katie Kitchell next. Uh, same thing, please. Uh, full name and address. Oh. Katie dropped off. Katie, did you have something you wanted to say?
Can you, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I don't know why it went muted. Um, Katie Kitchell, five ninety-seven Sugar Top Road, White River Junction, Vermont, but we actually are taxpayers in Norwich. It's just our mailing address. Um, I just wanted to, um, my comment is that there have been a lot of changes that have happened in our community over the past three years since the pandemic. And you know, as I've noticed on the listserv, uh in terms of town issues, um, there's been a lot of divisiveness. And I feel like there's also some disconnectedness happening in our school community as well. And I wanted to um support the idea of finding ways to have more community conversations about what our vision for our school is and ways to help people connect and talk more. Um, because I find that these forums, the school board forums, these two-minute like small area times uh can be frustrating in terms of having an uh an open conversation. Um, and I'm not quite sure where else, where else we can sort of talk as a community about what our goals are, what things we hold valuable, what things we'd like to see um in places for both neighbors as well as parents and as well as teachers and administrators to talk together. And so I just am speaking in ear and support of maybe having community conversations uh around the school, especially as we have these big budget changes that are happening um around the the C L A and all these things. I'm worried that it's going to be harder for communities to support some of the programs that we held valuable. So that's my, my, my comment.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Yes, Lynn.
Thank you. Um, Lynn McCormick, three ninety-four Main Street. Um, so I think I essentially want to echo what Katie just called for and just say a little more specifically that as we've emerged, I think, from the pandemic restrictions the past year, I've really personally been struggling to understand what I see as really major changes that have happened in the school since my current sixth grader entered the school as a kindergartner in twenty sixteen. Um, and I've talked to a lot of parents and a lot of community members, and I've realized that many, you know, don't share my view about what might be a concern. Some people think that some of the changes that are happening are clearly necessary and there are pressing problems that have been identified. Um, but I think the the fact that people are holding such different perspectives that are coming out that individual conversations really does highlight that there's sort of a lack of understanding of where our school's at and what direction we're heading. Um, and really, I've had a number of parents say they're just kind of confused about what's going on. They're, they're unsure. Um, and they don't know if there's a problem, but they also don't know what is happening at the school. Um, I I believe that the school is addressing a problem, and I went back through, and I think Mr. Gonya has presented data showing that there's some, you know, concerning trends with um test scores. Um, that, you know, and even reanalyzing data that had been presented in different ways to the school board in the past. Um, I think, you know, depending on how you're looking at data, it shows a very different picture. Um, but I I think that needs a really broad conversation, and we need to make parents aware of of what that data showed. And I I don't think most parents at the school are really tracking the, you know, the these meetings. They're, they're difficult to attend and they're difficult to to fully follow. Um. So I I believe, although I'm not certain, that the standardized testing data that's now being viewed differently, or perhaps is actually fallen, I'm not sure, um, is is driving the changes we're seeing at the school in terms of decreased, well, increased time for literacy and math instruction, decreased for oral language specials. I think social studies and possibly even science. I also have the impression that kids are spending less time eating and having recess, but I may be wrong about that. Um. I think that um that it, you know, essentially we need to understand what the chance are, why they're happening. And my impression is that the community should have an opportunity to weigh in about, you know, if there is a problem that we are addressing, we need to understand that problem clearly. There shouldn't be an opportunity for the community to weigh in about how, uh, what the possible solutions are. My impression is that that may have happened internally last year with the scheduling programming committee, which I don't think we were all fully tuned into, nor was there any public access to those meetings. Um, but my understanding from what was presented to the board was that there were discussions there about the priorities of the school, about the, um, you know, the, the way to use the schedule to feed those priorities. And the result of that was a very big shift in, as I see it, in the, in the priorities of the school and in where children are spending their time on school day. Um. I realize that over time, if I can have, may I have another minute or two?
Uh. It's two minutes. What, what more? Yeah, I think we've got the gist of what you're saying.
I wanted to just comment about the loss of the first Friday, but what I believe is the loss of the first Friday program in the way that it was envisioned, in the way that my sixth grader experienced as a kindergartner, where it was a full day that was really devoted to play and nature exploration. There was a big discussion with this board about the importance of play in kindergarten. I think uh Dr. Adams acknowledged the teachers at the time and how they were sort of the forefront of recognizing the importance of play, and they were bringing the race wheel up to speed at the time. And so trying to understand how that was June of twenty nineteen, and here we are in twenty twenty-three, and it's, to my knowledge, the kindergartners are not spending a full day in the forest, but they are spending much more time in their chairs. Well, I I shouldn't say that. I don't know that for a fact. My impression is that they're spending more time on instruction, on academic instruction and less time on play. Um, so I I think this should be part of a discussion, and really, I think it's Katie's best that we, we do need to have community discussions. So I think that the administration and the school board should be hosting conversations and inviting parents in um to talk about the priorities of the school. Thank you.
Thank you. I I'm not going to go into detail here, but I do know that Sean has frequently meets with the P T O and I think the strategic plan that uh Dr. Bass talked about regulated meetings is going to be a good source of uh um where those conversations can happen in the future too. But thank you all for your comments. Um, with that, it does not appear as though we have any more comments at this time. Uh, so uh next up is usually the P T O report. Is there a P T O rep with us tonight online? So raise your hand. If not, let me come back to that later. Okay, I'm not seeing any right now, so let's keep moving down our agenda. And uh this brings us to the business requiring discussion. As everyone knows, we're in the midst of our budget process. Uh, last uh meeting on December twelfth, Jamie gave us the overview presentation. Um, we have since got some new information in terms of a dramatic uh drop, uh further drop in the common level of appraisal from eighty-seven point three nine percent down to seventy-four point four eight percent. Uh, last night, uh, the budget committee did send out a bit of an update on that based upon some numbers that uh Jamie Teague, our business administrator, ran for us, uh just as a a bit of a brief background, but I know Jamie has posted a lot more detail to our public content on the budget uh and warrant overview this evening. And uh Jamie, I'll just turn it over to you to see what you think would be the best way to run us through the latest information as specifically with regard to uh the effect that the common level appraisal has had on on budget numbers since we saw them uh back in December.
Yeah, I don't think I did a comparison because you got sent out the um the write-up. Um, but if you can see in summarization is that um all of the changes result, the tax increase of about eleven cents for homestead and about uh just over twelve and a quarter cents for non-residential. Um, and so there is updated budget book exhibits, depending on what view you want to look at, uh attached. Uh, and I've not adjusted the base amount down because the base amount is set by the legislature, uh usually about May. They, they play with it a couple of times and set it in May. Uh, we did have two R M S here that warned us that if I won't stay at fifteen thousand, it's been in service or something like that, uh and that it is going to drop, but I hesitate to pick a number to send it back out, although I think after tonight's meeting, when I restate all of the documents, perhaps it may be um interesting to look at it at what it was set at last year, just for a comparison. Um. So I also um made the view so that folks could look at what it would do if we have the group one budget reductions, which was amounting of a hundred ninety thousand, six hundred and twelve dollars. Um, so I reran exhibit two and three, so you can see the differences there. With that reduction and no other changes, the tax rate for homestead uh will come in at one ninety-nine.
And Jamie, just for the people who weren't here to see the presentation last meeting, but the group one budget reductions are the one point oh F T E K to six special educator, the point five oh F T E French teacher, and the one point seven four F T E special assistant.
They're all open positions.
Which are, I'm not going to leave.
Or some on some time. Um, sorry, but I didn't, I didn't prepare a whole budget presentation.
Nor should you, it was just.
That's okay. Thanks for pointing that out. Some people are announced. Um, so if we make that change, the increase would come in at uh just over eight cents. However, that being said, there were two back-to-back budget or combined budget meetings today, which uh here I attended uh on behalf of the Dresden Budget Committee. And so there were changes made on the Dresden budget, which are now going to affect the Norwich uh budget. Um, and so we made that change also, um, which is showing it at uh a dollar ninety-nine oh five. It's not a big change. It's just a very small change. Um, so, but it's been, it's been shared here.
I think Kim pointed out to you the other day what those were, but can you just, what, what were the changes that are?
The only one on Dresden is a change in um offsetting revenue from prior year from that. They made other cuts at the Hanover um school district level of F T Es and um out-of-district costs. And there was one other. They made a couple hundred thousand dollar change at the, at the local Hannover level. Um, so the budgets, as Bill discussed today, will go to the Dresden School Board next Tuesday, the tenth. And if there are any changes, you know, the board then will vote whether or not they want to affect any of the potential reductions that were shared or not at that meeting. Um, and then if there are any changes from that meeting, we'll then drive them into the other two budgets, you know, which we pushed this one out till the seventeenth, so uh that'll give us some time to take a look at that and if we get any other explanation. They've not frozen the uh you equalize pupil count yet. We did pick up a sninge on that. It's really like a tiny little snidge, but at least it went up, not down. Uh, they are rerunning those numbers today, tonight. Uh, he Brad Hoesse, free zone, send them back out on the reason tomorrow. Um, but I don't expect us to see any change from that, although they said they did update F Y twenty-two, which is, you know, because it's only the average, so um I don't think we had any issues or changes that we sent in. Some other districts do with their accounts. So it's still in flux, I guess, is the big point takeaway here. And we think it will go higher because that base amount probably won't survive. And the base amount right now is set. Um, if you look on the exhibits, I'm not knowing. It's set at.
Fifteen four seventy-nine.
Yeah, fifteen four seventy-nine. And last year it was frozen in thirteen, three, fourteen. So. If you want to know what that difference would drive, I can do it while you check when I'm in the next.
It was the same as last year. Our tax rate went like twenty-three percent, but yes.
It won't too. And it's a shoot. It shoots pretty big. I'm going to stop it.
Was there anything else you may, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember what you did, but anything else that you wanted to? Okay, Jamie, maybe you want to just forward what the increases and expenditures are for Dresden, sorry, for Hanover, R M S, and then even Hanover. I mean, keep me honest, I was trying to bring up quickly, but the Hanover, just everyone's aware, we're talking about our own budget here. The Hanover, the Hanover High School expenditures are at what, four point four percent?
Um, you know what? I can't, with the amount of numbers that go through my head, I can't. I don't try to memorize them, so let me pull it up.
Yeah, and then, well, Jamie's pulling up, I think R was up around five and change, although it sounds like they cut a little bit, and the Hanover tax rate is going up, which is causing news over there. Granted, revenue last year is not coming, so.
Yeah, so the budget change itself for Hanover is um up four point eight six percent. So budget to budget, the expenditures are going up just under five percent, four point eight six percent. The net assessment change is thirteen point three nine percent. And that's um a, a change in assessment, which means going out to the taxpayer's budget to budget of just under one point six million dollars because of, you know, the seven hundred and fourteen thousand in expenditures additional, plus the seven hundred thousand dollars in revenue loss from the state chartering the C A. Now for Dresden, and that's, that's changed. That was as built before we made a bunch of changes today. Okay, it's going to come down that the net assessment change um is going to drop into the eights. Um, the tax rate change is going to drop down to uh six point eight nine percent. Um, for Dresden, which doesn't have its own tax, so we just talk about budget changes. Um, I don't have it broken down here at Sardoy School, but the budget change for expenditures is for just under four and a half percent, four point four eight. And it's one point three million dollars. The net assessment change, however, is just at three point six four percent as revenues are higher. Uh, so the net assessment change is at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the Hanover share was um an additional six point four three percent because the student count swung. Okay, so the Hanover is picking up two percent larger share than it did the year before. So Dresden, I'm sorry, Norwich has actually seen a two point two percent drop year over year in the assessment through that swing.
So, so it was a long way to say that the the Hanover High School and the middle school budgets are up, both up around four, four and a half, five and a half percent.
The middle school budget up higher than high school.
It's up a little bit higher.
Yeah, so uh and all of that, if anybody's interested, is posted in board docs under Dresden Budget Committee. And it was a combined meeting in Dresden, however. Um, and then all of the changes that they affected, um, and Alex can do a great story on it, I'm sure. He was with us always, I think. Um, basically, we did option A in the very back. Um. Other than we're going to put the sixth grader reserve on for their coming out, that they're going to close because we no longer need it for Hanover. They're going to leave the rest of it into a special, this is where numbers are.
Is, have you had a chance, and I'm sorry to ask this now and not have done so earlier, the uh the warrant articles and the potential costs of, well, we're looking at septic playground and what, and have you had a chance to get a closer number with that? We'll have after next week's meeting on the septic sort of thing.
Yeah, and hopefully, hope to have better numbers Friday. We're having another meeting Friday about the discussions that have been ongoing with two different companies that we're looking at. Um, trying to choose one. Um, you know, space is one of the driving factors in what recommendation when they bring to you. Um, they're working out the comparisons because of different products. Um, so they're still working through the comparisons, build the commons. The holidays and the breaks have helped the conversation. They have conversations right before we rent a break, and they're just, the folks who are running those offices are just coming back when it's up this week, so.
Do we have numbers for potential, the playground work and paving though?
So we have the quote that came.
Yeah, so it's just based on, okay.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I don't have a quote on the paving, um, but that, that shouldn't be hard to get.
Okay.
It's probably not the best timing. So here, yeah. So obviously, when oil's high, pavement is high because it's, it basically, you know, it's mixed with the aggregate to live asphalt, right, the oil waste. So we can go out and get quotes. Um, and depending on the timing of when you actually lay it, it may come in lower, right? But as in New Hampshire and Vermont, if we go up to um an article to write, you know, to write debt or what have you, um, any debt that's not used, we roll back against, right, the share against assessments. Um, so that's the only caveat about, you know, getting quotes this early on aggregate um because the oil rates are kind of tumultuous, depending on what's going on in the Middle East and, you know, Ukraine. Um. So, but the other ones, I don't foresee, I don't foresee the playground costs, you know, skyrocketing or changing a lot. Uh, although plastic, they're not going with plastic materials. Plastics are made from oil as well, by far. So if, because we're going with nature landscapes, I don't foresee that being negatively impacted by that smart, you know. So the rates that we got should be pretty close. Um. Yeah, and so it's just a matter of doing a good comparison between the two different products because, you know, they're run in different ways and they're installed in different ways. Um, we're still trying to work through, you know, I'm getting a hell of a self, because that's the next report, but. So the answer is no, we haven't, but I will.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I don't, I know how much else you've got, how much before the next, our next and final meeting, do you think we'd have uh to review those two? Uh, not.
Hopefully, the Friday before.
The impact of the warrant. So the Friday, so you're thinking like the Friday the thirteenth before that meeting. Okay.
Yeah, I'm hoping. There's a lot of moving parts with getting that information sewed up, and one of the parts is the state of Vermont, right? So it's kind of like chicken and egg because, and I get frustrated, it was two thousand, the people aren't able to start with the phone, but um you know, some of the answers to some of the questions are dependent on what the state, you know, accepts or tells us with the design. But you can't get to that point until you pick a product, right? So it's a bit similar, right? So we're working through some of those questions. Um, and we have reached out with the state a couple of times, and, you know, in true fashion, I mean, they don't want to commit until they have a firm design as well. So I don't want to bring a recommendation to the board until I feel confident we have all the, you know, I's thought and T's cost. And I don't upset anybody's ample part, but if that doesn't make a merge vote, then that, that it is what it is, right? You don't rush into something just because there's deadline. Make sure that everything is right. Um, you know, with the understanding that if it doesn't, I mean, believe it, that's my goal. Um, if it doesn't make a merge vote, then it may be that we actually have a special meeting when, when we have the documentation and everything, right? Um, but there are two very good products that will work for us, that we know, you know, are um potential. Excess.
Okay, sorry to jump the gun on the actual board here, but uh any, first, any questions on the budget as it currently stands, or so, impact the C L A? Uh, whether or not people do want to look at the different basements. I, the only problem with the basement to me is that I have no action. You're going to mark people, you know, we're having to do it slightly, we're going to throw an end, perfect. Um, you know.
Um, I don't know what's going to be either, but I guarantee it's going to be lower than what it is right now. Right? Because the, I mean, that December one tax letter, um, by statute, right, they're required to quit all of the um surplus funds towards buying down the tax rate, and we heard from our legislators that it's highly unlikely to happen, so by using that fifteen four seventy-nine number in the calculations right now, we're essentially telling ourselves this is like the best possible scenario that is unlikely to happen, right? And so it's just going to get that you'll, it will go lower, which means the tax rate will go higher. We also don't have settlements with our teachers, our support staff, in particular with the teachers. We don't have a settlement that actually covers the year that we're working in right now. So it's not that we're just negotiating for salaries that are going to be future salaries. We're going for salaries that are supposed to be paid out right now, that weren't included in the budget, and so I would like, they are, like, there's, there's so much uncertainty on here in the wrong direction that I am inclined to support the uh the reductions that we're proposing. Understanding, right, that this is not Sean's preference. Right, Sean's preference was what he put forward in the budget, I get that, um, but at the same time, um you know, standing up in front of folks at town meeting, we're gonna have to say uh we're rather uncertain about things, here's the best case scenario, and the scenarios that come after that are only gonna be worse, and if the best case scenario, you're already looking at a, like a, like a ten cent tax increase. Yeah, I'm sorry, not comfortable with that.
What, I mean, what would you model up to sort of, throw baggage, but what would you model for a base amount? Something less, the difference between thirteen fifteen?
Uh, you know, something, uh, uh, no, I mean, I would, what would I, I would model a number less than fifteen, but probably maybe higher than thirteen three, something that we had last time. I think you might get a little bit of clarity after you see the beginning part of this legislative session, sort of go and see where folks are thinking about spending some of that ed fund money, um.
Well, I think, yeah, no, it would be instructive, because, I mean, these calculations are so challenging, that until you actually plug the number in, you don't you don't understand what that effect is gonna be on the tax rate.
Fourteen thousand, right, so if you, if we change it to fourteen thousand, um, we're sure which time. Okay, so this is group one reductions and Dresden update. So with both of those and the estimated pupil count, or anything that will be the CLA which is killing us, and so if you plug that in at fourteen thousand, that's gonna make an estimated nominal capture rate of two dollars and twenty cents. So it makes your capture go up by twenty eight cents.
What's the percent, so it works out seven, 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 six percent?
You'll find out in two hours.
Yeah, okay. Two, if people could do that, but it's.
Yes.
So I, I'm not good at the budget, but I just want to say this as a parent, that I'm worried if we do the group one reductions, that next year, when the taxes are definitely going to go up even more, we're never gonna be able to find a way to put those people back in if we need them, so I don't know that cutting them out now is the right thing to do. But I understand that taxes are not.
Okay, thank you. Other, Garrett?
Jamie, keep me honest here, but when I was, I've been doing it, and going back through these, updating the numbers, we've always seen that the numbers change, usually toward this year, I'm pretty sure it's different, because we're getting these numbers earlier, and they're being set earlier, and strangely, the base amount is being set high, usually we're working off of like last year's base amount, and then we get like a pleasant surprise. And everything kind of goes down, I have to do a look at all of the past year things and start putting them into a spreadsheet, you'd be like, oh, we were kind of
Which we've done.
Actual, the budget that was adopted at the meeting last, you know, month of February versus the actual budget is things all of a sudden are like, oh, we actually, it wasn't quite so bad, but now it's like
It's bad.
I mean, it's really bad, it's simply gonna now, because even with this base amount, we're looking at over a five percent tax increase, and if you keep going, even if you put in the base amount of like fifteen and change, it would be a ten, so the whole problem here is, is that our budget is up twelve percent. And if you look back at the past years, and I hear what everyone's saying, like twenty twenty was up point seven percent, twenty twenty one was up seven percent, twenty twenty two is actually down, that's just a skosh, point ten percent. Twenty twenty three is up six point six percent, so this year, we're like twice.
Yes, and part of that is the effect of not having negotiated settlements in the years that you're in. So they're catching up, and you're having to budget two in a year, or three in a year. Sportsdown, that budget's carrying three years' worth of a settlement, because it didn't have a settlement for three years.
So that's why we've been like.
So you're catching up with all your expenditures that haven't been budgeted for. It's, it's, it presents a problem when you're having to play catch up, because things haven't been settled and within the year, budgeted within the year, you know, that you're, that you're paying, it happened.
And so with that comment, is this a catch up here, where it's gonna be really bad this year?
It's not it.
Yeah, but my point, like, what you just said isn't even reflected in these numbers, so the, the twelve percent increase that Garrett's talking about is we need that stuff not even considered, so it's coming from other sources. And I'll say, and on top of that, the thing that hurt us even more is that every year, the equalized pupil number goes down. And education tax rates are based on spending for equalized people, so if your spending is going up and your number of kids is going down, and they're both happening at the same time, it makes the problem even worse.
And so part of that equalized pupil count that we're experiencing is that high schoolers have higher weights than little kids. And so we've, we've kept up more enrollment, but it's in the sixth and now section, and some of our larger classes have, you know, graduated, and the class is coming up, or we have that little declines. You know, we have that decline in numbers, right, with our, you know, so, so that's, that's also happening is that, you know, that the weights that are assigned to the pupils that we're counting has changed, has shifted. Perfect storm.
Okay, one more question. So this CLA has also been, because if you look back, right, going back to twenty eighteen, it was ninety eight percent, or ninety eight percent, or ninety four percent, ninety percent, eighty five percent, so it's like a five percent drop, I agree, this year dropped ten percent.
Yeah.
So if we'd only drop five percent, it's like half the problem.
And I think it's gonna drop again next year.
I mean, is there any way to talk, like, how do we drop ten percent this year, like, when we've been dropping five percent?
That should have to be pandemic spending on the real estate.
Right, so the CLA had only dropped five percent.
To the rest of the, so it means that everyone much more than ever.
Well, so, uh, my understanding is, we probably don't want to talk to the listeners to get the real thing, like, I think this is an issue not just in Norwich, but across the state, so everybody's CLA has been impacted by pandemic impacts. Being migration, the folks willing to pay top dollar for properties in the towns that they're moving to, so, um, Norwich is, is acute with at seventy four point four eight, but we're not the only town going through this. The worst side of this whole thing, right, is, so go ahead, do the reappraisal. Get the CLA back up to at or near a hundred, but that doesn't it doesn't, yeah, I mean, in some respects, it doesn't matter, because you're paying now a perhaps a lower tax rate, but on a higher value property. So people are not gonna suddenly see this huge windfall tax cut on their property taxes, because a reappraisal happened, because in large measure, what's gonna happen is most most housing values, property values are gonna go up.
The overall CLA for the state, if everyone dropped by ten percent, something should be like, in the entire school funding system, should be like and I guess that's why the base amount, right, like, well, something's like not, if the entire, if everyone's CLA drops, and then everyone's tax rate went up, which means the state's gaining a lot of revenue because of this CLA.
Um, yeah, this is simply a competition.
Not all of them are, well, I mean, I have the, I have the spreadsheet for everybody in the state, what the CLAs were in twenty one and what they are now, um. Yeah, I mean, there are a lot of them that are subject to order for reappraisal. Because I would say there's more than half that are subject to order reappraisal, meaning they've dropped below.
But if everyone went down ten percent, just like Norwich, that shouldn't be that bad. Because it should all catch up in the whole system, but.
And I think that's a question we have to ask.
Yeah, I would say, I think it depends, like, we need to wait and see. This could be the cause for a whole slew of school board budgets getting voted down in March. So we don't know the outcome of this until the voters go to the polls and make a determination, right? And, and I guess I, I wouldn't entirely be surprised if, because part of what was in that yield letter was this assumption that school board, school budgets collectively across the state were gonna go up by eight and a half percent this year. If that's happening, in combination with declining CLAs in a lot of towns, I wouldn't be surprised if we saw several budgets fail this year.
Tax rates, well, if you're twenty percent tax rate, yes.
But there were a few, which is interesting, there were a few that have stood down in the embrace.
Right, and so I guess, and that's why we sit here and we're struggling with the numbers, right, like, we're not alone in this. Um, you know, school, school districts across the state are, are, are struggling with this very same issue, right?
I'm wondering if it's gonna affect our CLA by next year, if the reappraisal gets done in time.
So, I mean, we may not be able to answer this right now, but a question I have is, you know, if everyone is, like, is Garrett bringing it up, if this is something that is happening in the majority of the towns, and there's then more revenue going into the state, do we know how, like, traditionally, I mean, I, I haven't been around enough to know, like, how much of that might be kicked back into the schools to help lower the property taxes, like, I mean, is there you know, can we, I know you can't count on it, but is there a way to try to get some promises from the state to help us out, or to take some of this extra revenue that they are, that there actually is extra revenue coming through the CLAs? To kick it back to the school boards to help relieve some of the pressure?
You know?
So that would be a question for your state reps and your senators, right, because they're the ones that determine what happens with if there is surplus money in that fund, so that's why I go back, so the December first tax letter, right, by statute, that letter is required to forecast a property yield number, what we also call the base amount, assuming that all of the surplus funds that are in there are used to buy down the tax rate, it's the legislature's discretion as to how they use that money, so if there are other projects that are coming up, for example, PCVs, right, that need money for education.
Which is happening, yeah.
It comes out of the ed fund, which means then all of that money is not going to buy down the tax rate.
Sorry, last, last point, there's so much quick science we're looking at, right, so if we were to increase our Marion Cross pledge by basically what Dresden did on a right, both the handover and you could look at it, handover went up four point four percent, Eric Richmond went up five point two five percent, or these are expenses, right? And if we did the same thing, we would go five percent, we have to drop it to six point nine five, that gets us down into a couple percent with the current base, and if you were to drop the base to like fourteen five, you're still talking nine percent tax increase, so that's why, like, you know, getting this budget of seven four to the closest seven, right, to like a five, six percent increase, it's like that kind of has to be done, I hate it, unless we're gonna look at it, unless, unless the townspeople are willing to pay ten, twelve percent increase, knowing that we don't really, the state's not gonna, they give us like, uh, we know the numbers from the state of my prior years too.
Jamie?
So just as an aside, out of two hundred and fifty four equalization study results, ninety seven of the towns had CLAs that dropped by ten oh one. We're not in that number, we're below that. There were ninety seven towns that had dropped by ten oh one, and some of them were, were above twenty.
That's huge.
Yeah.
The problem is
How many towns did they?
Two hundred and fifty four, that's most, that's the Problem is, if you're gonna rely on the hope for surplus uh for next year, you're also gambling on what the legislature legislative body is, one hundred and forty, that's what the legislature, the legislature is gonna decide what to do with those.
Yeah, I will, I will also say, I'm a little bit worried if if they go the route of using that money to buy down the tax rates this year, it makes next year's situation even worse. Not to remind folks that next year is the year when the new equalized pupil number hits, and Garrett or anybody else that just want to run the numbers, take that five ninety four, five ninety five point oh four equalized pupil numbers, and change it to four ninety nine point six two. We're gonna lose a hundred equalized pupils in one year.
Tax rate will be two thirty. Thirty percent.
Any other?
That's right, it's not, it's not done, right, so it's like, it, it's even more complicated, right, because with our CLA right now, as low as it is, if, even if things progress this, I think, as efficiently, or as the listeners and maybe some other folks are hoping, we'll end up with a reappraisal that is finished in June of twenty twenty four, which is then potentially, we've got a CLA at or near a hundred percent for the tax bills that are rendered in July and sent out, I think, sometime in August. Eight two minutes, so you've got then this dramatic easing of the property tax rate at the same time that equalized pupil number is going down. Such that, and I ran the numbers, I don't think this will happen, but who knows, it's very speculative, right? For folks that were paying attention with the law related to the change in equalized pupils, you get um, the benefit of a five percent tax rate increase cap. If you trip a five percent increase in the first year of the waiting study, but if we're, we're looking at here happening is that the CLA suddenly shoots up to a hundred. The same year that we see this massive decline in equalized pupils, that CLA could cause that tax rate not to increase by over five percent. Which means that we essentially realize the full impact of the waiting study in year one, when we've been telling people it might get spread out over five years. Um, and this
State, that, that's, you know, that's how you think that was charged.
My understanding, though, is that that tax rate cap in the law is applied after the application of the CLA.
Changing your I think that's, maybe something we want to definitely learn since later, so it's that.
All right, I'm taking notes on this. Any other questions, comments from board here? Okay, I know, did you want to address the one, so just updating last time, I know you anyways, I'll just point people back to the December twelfth meeting for uh the information that, that at that time, and then, as you mentioned, we'll have some more information, hopefully after uh January thirteenth, before the January seventeenth meeting. I will give an opportunity for any of our attendees to uh raise their Zoom hands, or anyone here in person uh for questions at this point in time, though, before we move on to the next discussion. I'm gonna push that to the reports later, um, thanks.
I'll let him know.
Okay. Um, not seeing any at this time, uh, I will reiterate one more time that uh the final meeting is on Tuesday, January seventeenth, at six thirty P M, at which time the board will vote to, on the budget that will be put before the town, and as was mentioned earlier, in the listener post that went out uh last night, and arrived in the digest this morning, the Dresden budget uh will be voted on next Tuesday, January tenth, in Hannah Rice School Library, also Tuesday, January tenth, in Hanover High School Library, also Zooming online, starting at seven P M. All right. With that, yes.
Do we know what the, Jamie, do you know the deadline is for our articles?
Yeah, that's a part of it.
We left it at five A M.
So even if, even if we wanted a little more time, because things were uncertain about the whole subject and the playground, we don't have a whole bunch.
That's why we had you with us at eight.
Five P M, okay, one of them.
Yeah, we've got a couple hours.
One more, do we, just for, um, so what's the plan to decide on? I know I'm on a budget committee, but do you try to make the final decisions between now and?
It's, well, that's why I was asking, we'll have the numbers, so we'll.
You're talking. Of course, yeah, so making decisions about what do we, I guess that's, when do we, you know, they don't know. They give us the date, the final date, because this is the first time we've ever raised amount that I think is too high. Typically, the base amount is too low.
Well, they usually give it two.
Yeah, so the challenge this year, right, is in previous years, so that December one fax letter is just a forecast. It's just required by the tax commissioner, so to give us guys, sort of us folks some numbers to work with when we're budgeting, that final property yield number, that base amount, won't be known until the end of the legislative session. So when we go to the town meeting, we'll say this is our best estimate. And that's all, that's what we've always done, right? The difference this year, so the difference this year is that the letter came out and the letter only had one number, and that was the highest number. In years past, what they've done, they've, they've given us a couple of scenarios, said, if you use all of the money to buy down the tax rate, here's what the yield number would be, and then they would say, if you use half of the money to buy down the tax rate, here's what the yield number.
What do we usually use in our budgets?
We usually use the, yeah. But in terms, I will say, in years past, at town meeting, I, I'm pretty sure I've given scenarios of saying, here's what it would look like with what, here's what it would look like with the other, right?
But we've always kind of gone forward and kind of the towns voted on it, we've gone forward with the budget, we've been lowering our.
We're not sure we want.
So is there a way that we can look at the past years, maybe, and see what year in the first, it's like, what? You know, their range, we kind of make our own range, so at least do the educated guess that plug in there, maybe?
Yeah, because I mean, I said in New York, right? I don't know that I've always seen two. But yes, yeah.
All right, we can make an educated guess and say it's fourteen five. Right, fourteen seven.
Well, I could read the data for your, for your next meeting, get it to you by that party, we will get it all related.
So, yeah, I think that's what we most self will have, the Warren article, I do have a better idea about the Warren articles, because how that would affect the overall tax rate, or if we can change and model a couple of options on that baseline here, to answer your original question of that is the meeting where we're going to decide. So January seventeenth at six thirty P M, we vote to decide.
And the date from the nineteenth, we're the one that someone tried to petition one month, so we'll leave ours to be the same day.
Yes. All right, um, with that, let's move on. Uh, I do think maybe the budget committee could prepare another, for anyone who's not tuning in tonight, tonight, one of the consider preparing another um, email, so maybe we could talk to some of the different base amounts that couldn't be considered. We also didn't include, at least not today, that there's other factors, which Neil talked about earlier with regard to the unresolved negotiations too, that we should probably let people know, we're not currently in the in the considerations. So maybe we could get together to figure out future messaging between now and the seventeenth as well, just to keep people apprised of where we are. All right.
Maybe we should have a meeting.
Yes, maybe we should schedule that. Draft twenty twenty-three, twenty-four school calendars. Next up, we do have, uh, that draft calendar in Word docs and Jay, we can talk.
Sure. The important thing to stress is this is the Jordan Act now. Uh, so we, we did, we, we did receive correspondence from one concerned citizen. I actually met with her, regarding a couple of different issues with the calendar, and I'll share that.
And I will note, Jay, that I, the correspondence is in the Chairs Report section on the, for docs.
Oh, okay, great. Well, it, it's relevant to this discussion, so I decided I'd throw it there that I, I met with Jocelyn Meyer, who came to meet with me to talk about how our, our holidays are structured and expressed some concern that um, we, we are honoring different faiths, religious holidays in the calendar, and uh, it's just something to think about when I reviewed this particular calendar, the, the, the only uh, vacation that we have in our calendar that is aligned to a paid holiday, um, I'm sorry, religious holiday would be the two days that we have in our, our calendar that are off for Christmas, like expressly. And we've typically done that because it's a federal holiday. Uh, we, we we certainly don't have policy or any commitment to, to do that because it is a religious holiday. And we've, we've gone to great lengths historically to avoid having any particular religion highlighted in our calendar. Uh, that said, um, Jocelyn pointed out to me, having moved here from New York City, that, that there were multiple faiths that were recognized in the school calendars and, and, uh, her district there, and thought that was a really good thing to do to increase cultural awareness. Students tend to be, uh, more inclusive. So, uh, so that's just something for, for us to think about. What we've done traditionally, our calendar process is sort of autopilot. We, we align ourselves with Hartford Area Career Tech Center and do our best to align with it because we have a number of students, an increasing number of students at the high school participate in those programs. And so we, we do our best to make sure that they're able to, to, uh, mesh those schedules as well as they can because they get, have to get their academic instruction here, and then they travel to Hartford for their, their career intent ahead. So that's what this draft represents. Um, things like the weeks that we choose for our various extended vacations, or our spring break, or our winter break are aligned with them. Um, and if people have concerns about the calendar, encourage people to contact me. Um, certainly the board, if you'd like, uh, but, uh, but we'll certainly take those things into consideration as we finalize this. Another point that Jocelyn, uh, brought up was that, uh, Vermont is different than New Hampshire in, in terms of the number of teacher in-service days that, that are required. And you'll find that interspersed throughout the calendar here. And her, her request was simply, she was pointing out that it's, it's difficult for families that have two working parents um, to accommodate those days during the week, and in order us to be able, just to be sensitive to that. And, um, so she encouraged us to schedule those in-service days before and after the start of the school year, because um, I think she made a recommendation that we consider having in-service days on weekends. We can certainly talk to our teachers about that.
She said before, after weekends.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I, I misread that, then I thought it was on Saturday. All right, yeah, so, um, so I just want to share that because, um, she, she, she was kind enough to stop in and actually have a really nice conversation about it and, and, and sent us a very thoughtful email with the request. Uh, other than that, it's, it's pretty standard um, schedule. We did get a waiver from, um, uh, our secretary of ed last year to use hours to keep track of our instructional time, like New Hampshire does, where Vermont uh, calculates instructional time based on days only. Uh, but because of our interstate status, Secretary French granted us the flexibility to do that, um, which helps when, when we have things, disruptions like snow days. Um, so that's something else we'll, we'll continue to look at, but but the draft, as you see it, is as closely aligned to the Hanover Dresden calendars, and again, it comes from really the Hartford Green Tech Center.
And what is, I was thinking it was later, like, March, April, even though we voted on it, what, when do we expect to have this back? What, what?
Uh, we, we'd like to bring it back for the February, but you know.
All right.
Just, we've had a lot of parents who've expressed concerns about planning vacations, and we, we wait to, while we pull that up.
Lisa, but Sean, did you want to add anything on to this? I know you've been part of the process as well.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add is we originally draft the word in here, we had spread our in-service days out throughout the week. That was strategic because when you have all of them on Monday and Friday, then you tend to miss those same specials classes. But because we have our seven-day schedule that rotates through, that's not as much of an addition. So we went back and moved them to Mondays and Fridays to accommodate attendance a little bit better.
Thank you. Lisa, did you have a question?
Yeah, um, uh, this is probably a, a bigger discussion, um, but I'm wondering if we did want to accommodate, um, more diverse religious holidays and, and be a little more inclusive about that. And not, we would have to add dates to the calendar somehow. And so, you know, I think we need to have a discussion as to how early in August we want to start and how late in June we want to end, or do we have a discussion about, do we need a February break and an April break? And I, I mean, having moved here, I've never heard of a place that had a, a week in both February and April, like, it was always just one week in March-ish. Um, and so I don't, I don't want to say that this is my proposal, but it just feels as if we might be needing to have some of these community discussions. Um, and, and really look at, like, why do we have a February break and an April break? Is it just so people can see? Um, I don't know, like, I, you know, I, I'm not opposed to that, I just, um, I, I worry about extending the school year too far into June or July, because summer camps and kids, um, high school kids having summer jobs and, you know, needing summer jobs in order to go to college, um. You know, if you shorten the summer too much, they don't have an opportunity to have those working experiences, and, and do we honor that? I mean, is that, which is kind of part of our strategic planning process and encouraging kids to have a lot of different types of experiences being outside of the academic world. So I just, it's, it's like, this whole discussion just brings up all sorts of stuff for me, and it, it.
The main challenge with that kind of a, I would call it a massive shift, that would be this Hartford area alignment, because there you're talking about, so you'd have to get thirteen schools in alignment, aren't they?
Right, no, and, and I think because of the Hartford tech, we have to align with that, like, that would be my first, I, I agree with that as our first priority.
Yeah.
Um, so, because of the kids that are there and, and an increasing number, and again, that fits with the strategic planning process of allowing more kids to have non-academic experiences, but it just, it feels like this is a much bigger, like, this one letter is very thoughtful, and I'm so grateful she came into top, but it, it it has my wheels spinning about, you know, what, what are we thinking, what are our priorities in, and how do we best meet as many priorities as possible? So.
True.
Um, is there a policy for religious holidays in a missing school? I assume there is, I just can't find it in Word.
There would excuse absence, for sure.
Okay, because I know my kids have had issues when they miss school for young people or pass over, or when they come back, they've missed tests or they've missed another thing, so it's a bit of a normal rest, but a lot of makeups. And they have, and it's fine, but I think more interesting is should have a younger, different school because the.
Right, I think that is an area where it's, the calendar gets tricky because then we run, we will inevitably get a letter from whatever the organization is for separation of church and state. Um, and, and we try really hard not to endorse a particular religion because of the constitution, unless the policy or anything like that, but the, um, our policy committee could, could sort of codify uh, our approach in terms of making sure we're making those allowances for, for kids to practice.
And I, I know coming from a school that did this shift while I was there in high school, that went from, you know, say there would be no tests on Jewish holidays to not having school on Jewish holidays because there was some tipping point of the percentage of the town that was Jewish, and that was what was needed. I don't think North is ever going to get to that point, but it would be nice to have at least some acknowledgement at the beginning of the year of what the policy is, just so parents know.
I, I believe, I don't know this for a fact, but I believe council proposed that as a policy, at least at the high school level, of asking of asking the teachers not to give tests and significant homework on, on my holy days.
I know a percentage of students who, I, there should be enough lines to get a monster, I don't know that you need whatever days are offered.
Right, but I do remember sitting in on that, on that discussion, and I, I think that they did, um, I don't know how strict the policy is, but they definitely made that request.
Well, maybe we can get that for the next, when we bring this.
Right, we have, and we had done that with my entire leadership team, each year is, and, and Ryan's been really nice, like, downloading your calendar of all the religious holidays. Um, and we have to, we have to continue to remind ourselves, um, especially when dates change.
It's hard because the Jewish calendar is not high.
Right. Garrett?
Uh, uh, two comments, I think, why isn't, you should probably keep in mind what other public schools do concerning better public school kid, and I'm sure, I'm pretty sure that February and spring breaks is what every single school does in Vermont, Massachusetts. So my question is, is which week? Because my thing was it seemed like sometimes we're on the Massachusetts Vacation Week, sometimes we're in New Hampshire Vacation Week, so otherwise, private schools do that in March, and then I think my second comment would be is, I think we just have, I'm all well, four looking at the ethnic holiday thing, but what other ethnic holidays, other than the Christmas, other than the holiday break that is overlapping with Christmas? There are no other ethnic holidays, so I think that point is something it's tricky because it's to, the point is, we, we typically, most of the holidays are federal holidays, right? They're federally, which is what we suck with, so I think it's not against doing the ethnic holidays, but I think we just, where does it end, right? Like, is it Jewish or this, and, you know, how?
Be careful with ethnic and religious. Yeah, make a distinction, um, Good Friday is the only Christian holiday, but no, I'm not saying it's off, I'm just saying that, that is. No, you don't, so I don't see any reason why I need to come in.
So it is addressed in the Dresden student policy J H. Um, as an excused absence, observation or celebration of a religious holiday, this is a student absence policy. Um, so we could take a look at this policy. I don't know that it's been brought down to the two other schools. Just because it might have been, this, the council, student council might have brought it forward as a.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, I do think it would be worth doing a review of the, I feel like it's in the handbook, too, was, as well, in terms of the guidance, it's there, but if you look at that between now and when we go down February, other questions aboard, I do have.
Yes, the five days, because I found an email, you answered Vermont law.
That's actually a contracted agreement with the teacher.
And we only have five days, right? We have eight teacher service days.
Yeah, there were three before the school year started.
Oh, okay, so what?
So if you just, you look at the calendar there, you can see the ones that are, there's, what is it, five, five, instead of this plus two teacher and, uh, parent-teacher conference days, right?
It's kind of in those.
Right, those seven, plus the three before school starts. And actually, uh, Jocelyn is with us online tonight and has her hand up, so I'm going to let her jump in here and talk now. Jocelyn, you should be able to unmute and talk, and just please give your full name and address.
Thanks, everyone. Jocelyn Meyer, uh, twenty-seven Beaver Meadow Road. Um, I just want to thank everybody, uh, for entertaining this conversation, and thank you to Jay for your, um, flattering remarks. I appreciate it. I enjoyed our. Splattering remarks. I appreciate it. I enjoyed our conversation as well. Um, and I, um. I just appreciate that we're having this conversation. Um, particularly in the context of, you know, considering whether or not it's feasible to observe non-Christian holidays. Um, I agree with what was said earlier about the need to have an inclusive process. Um. You know, I think it's certainly something that the community writ large should be involved in, not, you know, and I would advocate not just Norwich. But Hanover as well. Um, you know, I myself am Jewish, but I appreciate, um. The fact that, you know, as Jay mentioned, when, um, coming from New York in New York City. The New York City school system observes Eid, which is the most expensive, uh, the most important Muslim holiday, um, as well as. Chinese New Year. And, you know, I think that. Um, the awareness that that brings to students and families, that those are important holidays celebrated throughout our country. Um, is, is really important and also serves as a marker to, um. For a feeling of inclusivity. Um. I, I appreciate that holidays can be, you know, according to current policy, can be considered excused absences. Um, I don't think my children's absences for Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah were marked as excused, but frankly, that matters. To me, how they felt, um, you know, not going to school, particularly first thing in, you know, early on in the year. When community is being built, um, you know, they really love Marian Cross and. And just say like, sorry, you're not going to go to school today because we're going to celebrate this holiday, like really. Made them feel a little excluded and, and I think for me personally, in my own experience growing up. Um, you know, made me really feel like a minority. And so I would urge, um. The board to just think about how we could have a conversation as a larger community to, to identify. Um, which holidays. Um, we might want to consider. I understand that it can be a slippery slope, but I think through an inclusive process, we could come to an agreement. Um, and I, I would also just like to point out, um, again, in relation to the number of staff development days, that. If some of the staff development, some additional development days were moved either again before or after the school year. Um, that would free up a large number of, um, of other days that could be. Uh, allocated towards observing religious holidays. Um, and I just want to point out that. Not only do we have eight, um, professional development days and two days off for parent-teacher conferences, which are not. According to the policy that I read. The parent-teacher conferences are included in the five professional development days. We also give our teachers an hour every Wednesday, um, for in-service. So our teachers are getting well more. Than the five, um, required by the state. And, and I understand that that is a separate contractual issue. With, um, with the teachers' union, but I think it's just one other way of, of thinking about how. How to skin this cat. So thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Jocelyn. Any other?
We, we might want to, um. Share this up with our, with our reps and senators on this because there is some aspect that you had mentioned of. When we're talking about the holidays, this coordination effort that's required with. You know, Hartford and the Fairness Tech Center. I won't even get into the sort of the interstate school district implications, but even if in the state of Vermont, if there was. You know, maybe, maybe legislators ought to consider. Um, you know, these things and the implication on, on school calendars. Because if the whole state was doing the same thing, it would be a little bit easier. That just one school district tried to make some changes when everybody else around them wasn't having or dealing with the same thing.
We can reach out, we've got plenty of things to reach out to. Uh, others, I'm not seeing any online in the board. Okay. So we will likely see this next meeting. Uh, meantime, maybe you and I can take notes and pick up the. Policies as they exist, plus anything that's in the handbooks too, that might be relevant for the conversation.
Sure.
Uh, and thank you, Jocelyn, for the learning, for, uh, speaking up now too. Uh, next are, excuse me, agenda is the pride fund donation, and I believe Sean is going to speak to them.
And in the evening of things that are not as pleasant, I'll share a fun thing. Uh, our pre-game team submitted a grant to the pride fund to pay for VINS to have a presentation for pre-game. They do a presentation for pre-game that they also invited, one of their loves to come and be part of that. So it's a thousand dollar, um, grant that we were given and. We looked to great use and greatly enjoyed by our under students and their buddies.
Thank you very much. And, uh, thanks to the pride fund and for putting together the proposal too. Alright, and that brings us back to Jamie T again with the facilities update. And we did go through these in some detail at the last meeting. I, I think it might just be helpful for anybody new here and actually for myself too. I mean, we've got some numbers in here. Do you want to address what's here or just wait till after the future meeting too?
Because as we discussed, I, I mean, I'll briefly discuss that, right? That the two. Uh, quotes, things, whatever, um, submittals that we received. Um, have a lot of numbers in them that are very different between the two different products. Um, and we're following up with both of the companies. Uh, because both of these companies are used to selling the products. And then having a G C, um, general contractor or doing a design build process. For the installation of them. So because that's what they're normally used to, I'm going to say that the. Submittals, while they both have numbers in them, some of the numbers that are relevant to comparing them. Are not there, okay, like. Um, and I don't remember which one it is, but, uh, you know, electrical work that needs to be done. And potentially some of the plumbing, uh, updates that might need to be done. You know, they didn't go out and get the numbers for all of those different things. And so whether that was, you know, a shame on, on us for how we wrote the vid requests, right? Uh, on not saying soup to nuts, right? Um. Or that we want you to do it with your own G C with a design build, you know. Um, we're working through all those now, so we can do a comparative analysis on what the true cost. Of soup to nuts, putting it in the ground or on the ground is. Um, and those are the discussions we're having now. They're both viable options. We know that from the state. They told us that. Um, we, some of the pieces that are difficult for us to work through, as mentioned earlier, is that. You, we don't know exactly what, what might need to change. Until you draw up all of the specifications and parameters. Um, of the application itself, we're going to go to the state. We're not expecting any surprises. They will, they will all in the state, they will then install in the state, so. Um, and we had that early conversation with, uh, Terry Shearer and I believe Kristen Ashman, yes. From recording, um, have both, I know we talked to Terry. I believe we reached out to Kristen and we talked with Kristen when she was here during the March intense. Uh, so I know she knows about the algae. Um, and the other product is in the state of Vermont because. She wanted to see her, you know. So, you know, that's what we're working through. So I don't know that I have a lot more to add tonight, other than. Uh, they're both very viable. And so I think it may come down to. Siding them, right? What best fits? And if we decide. Oh gosh, I don't like that. I'm citing it there. Uh, it's too big or it's too unsightly or it's too this. Then that's where we may have none. It's not a hurdle that we can overcome. It'll just be a challenge that we need to have additional conversations. Perhaps with one of our neighbors who we already had conversations with about, you know, listen. If we want to run a trench down half of your property and half of our property, are you okay with that? You know, so we had early conversations, uh, with the church or Jason, some other, um, about. The possibility of a joint adventure if we needed to. Um. At this point, we're not, we're not to that point yet. We're still trying to make. Uh, to get all the data and then meet with the principal and say, okay, you know, because. Sean hasn't been engaged completely because we don't have all of that comparable data. So that we can walk the rounds with him and say, listen, this is what it might look like. Get his initial reaction. I mean, I know he's worked through the plans, but, um, once we have more data about the sizing. Of one of the units, we'll be able to make some better informed decisions.
Correct. And so I was going to mention too, that you did repost the, uh, proposals to the board docs so people can read them there. Do you think, uh, can Karen post those to the septic website too, so that there's kind of all I want?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's my fault. I thought I last heard with all of them.
Yeah, that's fine, thank you. Alright, any board questions on status here? Okay, anyone listening online have a question about the. Status of the septic proposals?
And what we're looking at will address the, the needs for the kitchen. So that we do a full-on site. On program.
And, and just for people watching or talking, the reason, uh, that these things might be combined is because, uh, and when I signify. And the septic playground with the paving is that, uh, the septic and the paving can't. Wouldn't logically be done until the septic is in place because the septic dictates everything here.
Well, yeah, right, right. We have to dig up.
We'd have to dig it up, so it would only make sense to do it all at once. Alright.
And USDA will write loans up to fifty million, so you will have.
Alright, good. Alright, with that, thank you for, uh, the updates and I look forward to hearing more, uh, resulting from the meetings next week. And I'd be interested in Jamie and participating in those if you don't mind my, um, doing so. Alright, uh, that ends our business prime discussion for this evening, so we can get right into the business requiring any action. And we do have the opportunity to, uh, approve by consent agenda. I do have the, I'm a spinster man, I think, here, a happily entertaining motion. Neil, uh, move to approve items B through E by consent with a special note of gratitude. For the donation of a thousand dollars from the pride fund. Thank you very much. Lisa, all those in favor? And Alice, thank you very much. And that are up for signature. Uh, that will bring us right into the communications and reports. I did hear that, uh. Now, that's, it would, does Katie, does someone online want to provide a PTO report to Mr. Okay, I see Katie here now, thank you. Um. Katie should be able to talk now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Katie Kitchell, five ninety-seven Sugar Top Road. Um, Molly Riordan was on earlier, but her audio wasn't working, so she wasn't able to get your attention, so she sent me the PTO report very quick. Uh, update on the gift making festival. It was a big success with over one hundred children attending and they raised seven hundred dollars for grants. Uh, the end of the year, uh, or sorry, the, uh, holiday teacher gift, um, initiative was a success. This year, the PTO asked, um. The classroom reps to encourage families who wanted to donate for gifts for, for teachers to not focus on classroom gifts. But actually to focus on the teacher, um, as a, as a person outside of a classroom, as a classroom, and so lots of. Wonderful things were given to teachers, to the homeroom teachers, um, and then also some funds were collected for non-homeroom teachers to, to support the. Support staff and administration and, um, specials teachers, and so everybody got a small token of something to take home over the holidays. And there was some leftover money from that, so we were able to surprise the staff with some pastries on the first day back from school. That we played next to a beautiful basket. I'm just going to do a shout out to Principal Ganyau. A beautiful home-cooked English muffins that he had brought for the staff as well. So it was a beautiful display. Um, the upcoming events are a skating party, obviously rather permitting on the twenty-sixth of, uh, January. And a Valentine's Stop Appreciation Breakfast. And once again, a huge thank you to PTO volunteers. The events are not possible without them. That's it.
Thanks very much, Katie, and, uh, thanks for your work at the PTO as always. Always very impressive to get these, uh, great updates. Um, Jamie, how's connection?
I'm just going to make one comment. Um, apologies to the PTO because I had some outages in my, uh, department and we didn't get their, uh. Their deposits booked into the system in a timely manner, so when they got there and they'd be here. Uh, financials, they didn't look quite right. So they are all booked now. I would have to get this up. So apologies to.
I'm announcing this because, uh, and I haven't tuned back in honestly, I hope to, but, uh, is the five oh one C three status? Progress moving along as far as you know? I know Molly referenced it a bit last time, it sounded like they were close. Have you got any updates? Uh, Katie, did you know?
I, that was not on the list of things that I was given to talk about.
Check in with Molly separately, but thank you very much for the, for the update.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, that brings us to the chairs report. I have just a few things on that. I did ask Ryan to, uh, post a couple of things, the public content of the chairs report. One is the correspondence we already referenced earlier about the calendar. Uh, the other, and I did not, I was not specific enough in what I, uh, wanted Ryan to post. I was passing along some information that Neil asked me, um, from the Musco Board Association, um. Some, uh, background slash training on open meeting law, uh, that I think would, uh, and Neil and others. Think would be useful for board members to review when they have the opportunity. The link that you see in there, uh, from YouTube is, uh, to the actual presentation itself by. I believe the V S B A executive director, uh. And, uh, there is, uh, a series of slides that go along with it, which I will send directly to board members that Neil provided me. And I did not get, uh, to Ryan as I should have to post the public content here. But I will pass those along. I'm sure it's on the. Sure, also to, and it is on the V S B A website too, but, uh, it, it is certainly worth, uh, a watch. And, uh, going through those slides as well. Um, I also wanted to mention, and I apologize for the delay on this, but we had spoken a couple of meetings ago about establishing a board. Liaison position with the select board. Lily had offered to do that for the school board. I have since been in contact with the select board chair, Marcia Coway, who said that Aaron Lamb Purdy will take on the role from. Uh, select board is that point of view. This is where we would have, uh, our members attend each other's meeting and provide a five minute or so. Five to ten minute update at some point in time during the schedule. Uh, Marcia has suggested that if, well, it is available, the meeting on the twenty-fifth might be a good time to start doing that. Um, and then, uh, as such, our next, uh, actual regular board meeting is until February, that Aaron would come to the February meeting. Uh, Aaron, virtually or in person, will include, uh. A report opportunity for him as well, uh, and I will work with them to see where that would make sense in the agenda. I'm suspecting towards the beginning, maybe, uh, before soon after the PTO report rather than at this point. So we'll work on that, but that is the plan. Does twenty-five work for you? Okay, great. Um, so we'll move ahead with that. Um, we did also discuss one other piece of it, uh, which Bonnie hit Monday. Our, our town party posted earlier, which is the petition to file as a candidate. For, uh, the two school board positions that are open or available for a town clerk's office or by calling Bonnie. Um, deadline for candidates filing petitions, Monday, January thirtieth, twenty-three by five P M. Requirement is, uh, thirty signatures by registered Norwich town voters. Um, always a recommendation to get a few more, just in case they're not registered. And as we referenced earlier, all our petitions are due on January nineteenth by five P M. I, uh, I think that's all that I have now and the usual thanks during the winter season. I uh, I think that's all that I have now. And the usual thanks during the winter season for all the work that folks are doing. So much appreciated uh, for that, Jamie, Jay, Sean, and everyone else, administration teachers are continuing that too. So. Thanks.
Thank you.
And happy. And so next up is uh, our principals report from Mr. Gollman.
Great.
Which is also attached to work logs.
So we have an enrollment update. Uh, it is the same. Well, that is sure of the case. Um, I just draw your attention to that darling smile on the top of the page. We had two Richard concerts, two evening events for families to come up to that were extremely well attended and that smile was not unusual for the audience or the students. January is school board appreciation month. You've got a whole month that it needs to appreciate the music. And I would just like to appreciate all the things we do. I'm doing a huge task of balancing school need, community needs and nice meeting was a great example of how much you care and what you should start to do and the thought for the diversity first of something. I would encourage people listening to reach out and also extend this thanks. Our after school program started yesterday. There were twenty six students in game. It was pretty seamless for the first day. Uh, today I had some extra diners, so I went and checked it out. Things were going well. They are using just the local purpose room. Uh, I put some contact information in here. There are people who are looking for after school needs. There's plenty of room, um, plenty of space available for students to join. So first, it's been a pretty easy addition to the school.
Okay. Do you mind if I jump in here? What is, so what is the limit that has been set?
Uh, this is the.
Are we surprised that, I mean, we're in the middle of the year, I guess, which would, some parents have probably found things of this kind. Is that why we're thinking it's not maxed out right away?
I don't know. There was a huge call for care and it's here. Maybe it's just that the holidays came. But there is space available. So if anyone needs it, it's there.
Will you put out more?
But thank you.
And then I, I, January is a good time for us to look at our behavior data. So I put some graphs in. We chart our behavior using this, this program called the Swiss data, which we've used now very closely for at least five years. So we have five years of data to look at. Um, some things that I noticed before we looked at all the graphs, we've had an increase in behavior incidents this year. Compared to last year. The amount of behaviors incidents dropped significantly from the average December. So since I do got up and now we're starting to come back down. The majority of behaviors happened in classrooms and on the deck, which is not surprising. As I said, that was interesting. The majority of behavior incidents are made up of 1.5 of our student population. Which is a great thing. This database is being. And see what behaviors are, when they're happening, uh, where they're occurring, and then put plans in place to help students who are struggling in that area. And of all of our data this year, physical aggression, defiance and minor contact are the top three behaviors are still. And then I'll just briefly give you a little bit of information about these graphs. The first is the average referrals per day uh, for the past three years. So if you look at the best figures again, um, this year's is the program. This graph also has the uh, percentiles for our country that uses this particular system. So you can see the twenty fifth percentile with the blue rain, uh, horizontal line with the black lines, but a lean. And the seventy fifth percentile was the orange one. So in last year, our behaviors have gone down. We were that they gone down. This year we had, it was. If you look at the second, it's average referrals per day per month. Since September, October, November were building up, 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 and then December dropped way down. I suspect that January will probably be similar to December's information. Referrals by location is tells you how many referrals in the location to cross our school. Referrals by students, this is for us. So how many more pieces of information? You notice that uh, on the bar right, there was one student, thirty three referrals. That's significant. And referrals by problem behavior. Let's get an idea of what behaviors are shown in our. I personally have a few theories. Um, I could, I should have put in here in a graph that's behaviors by grade level. It varies. Greg and I meet with grade level teams once a month to look at behavior data. There are some teams where we meet and say, uh, there's nothing. And then there's some teams where we meet and say, we need to really look at what's going on. Uh, but that would be something interesting with that in the future. I do think we, we noticed at the concert that our second graders have not been, uh, out of class as in normal would. So our concert for K two almost looked like a new bar concept because our students had not had that practice of being on stage or doing the practice that we typically do. We had escalated due to our COVID protocols that we put that COVID need to do, but it hasn't impacted studying downstairs. We're trying to get up, up. There are more movement in the building, more activity, more disruption in the flow of their normal day. And that brings about numerous small issues. But what I will say is I'm pleased with our approach to student behavior in our school. We are afraid of being able to use this data, put plans in place, uh, monitor, give us progress and see those stuff shift down there. That is what I have. And I would gladly take any questions.
Thank you. May yours be for Sean. Thank you very much. And next is uh, I know that Assistant Superintendent Ron Steiner couldn't be with us this evening, but she did post a report to board docs. Do you want to quickly go through that, Sean?
Sure. Um, yeah, Ron has been um, busy trying to roll the ball, roll the stone uphill on uh, involving as many teachers as possible and during the day curriculum work despite a shortage of substitutes. So she noted that in her first item here and that, that there'll be grade level curriculum work that'll continue through the month of March. And again, the hope is that we can get subs here so that more Marion Cross teachers can participate in those sessions. Uh, she says here that she only had enough substitutes for kindergarten and sixth grade teachers to meet during the first half of the year. She also held a K twelve social studies curriculum meeting just today, actually. Uh, in which they looked at the uh, the, the national C three framework for social studies, uh, which is a set of standards that have been promulgated in the area of social studies and history. What else here? Oh, she's uh, she applied for, got a couple of supply chain assistance grants uh, for seventeen thousand dollars, which will help us with uh, food purchases for Marion Cross. Great. So that's wonderful. And she's also applied for um, some additional uh, S R funding for assessment. And if we do receive it, it'll help pay for the I R D benchmark assessment software. So, uh, and then finally, she, she can't quite shake her role as COVID coordinator. And uh, she was happy to report that numbers remain extremely low insofar as we're reporting them, people are reporting those to us. Um, and she's gonna, she has continued to monitor that. We're hoping that we get through the winter without having COVID as, as a problem. She has pointed out at other meetings that we've had in the other districts that we are certainly seeing a lot of other illnesses, um, sort of like a boomerang effect, I think, after kind of uh, being as cautious as we were uh, during COVID. But um, we're hopeful that everybody had a chance to have a wonderful break and get healthy and uh, we're, we're hoping to minimize that as much as we can. And I think that's my assistant superintendent report.
Thank you for providing. And would you like to provide your own?
Actually, there's, there's not a lot. Yeah. I, I want to also extend my wishes for a happy new year. Um, I cannot believe we're saying that already. It seems like we just started. But uh, you know, I can also extend my thanks to everybody who's not only worked on budget, but like you said last year, the fact that we're trying to be diligent about staying home when we're sick and all that still, and, and, and there's got so many unfilled, especially support staff positions. Our, I, I'm fortunate to feel like our teachers and our support staff and our administrators have gotten really used to this whole idea of doing the, the all hands on deck thing where um, we're spending a lot of time of serving in roles that aren't our primary role just to make things work. And that kind of stress on the system has to have an effect over time, whether it's morale, uh, exhaustion, whatever it happens to be. And we need to break that somehow. And a lot of these discussions we've had around budget. You know, we're, we're looking very closely at unfilled positions. I want us to be real mindful of that when we're making these sorts of decisions though, because those positions weren't originally budgeted because they weren't needed or necessary. The fact that they're not filled is a function of the job market right now. And I really feel like we have to be very, very careful when we're making these decisions about um, what impact those reductions can, can make. Uh, I, I don't feel like we were irresponsible when we budgeted those positions originally. And um, I just want us to be careful that we don't fall into the trap of saying, oh, we'll make things work. Um, even though we haven't filled those positions because that comes at a cost. And I just want, again, I, I know we're in really serious situations with, with our, our financial predicaments and really both states. But I, I don't believe we've been frivolous to this point. And I want us to be aware of that. This, that, that just reminds, reminds me, I, I came from a place before working here where we actually cut the budget every year. So I don't want to contradict what I just said. Um, here we tend to reducing our increase. Now, I want everyone also to be aware that we are still increasing our budget every year. And that's, it still requires trade offs because even inflation has been like steadily over six, seven percent um, for over a year. And that needs to be considered also when we're thinking about these increases. So I know it's, it's really challenging and that's, I, I, I just want to, again, echo what Tom said. I, I really am grateful to everyone for being so thoughtful. And doing the very difficult work of considering how, how do we balance that need to be good stewards of the public tax dollars? And also continue to provide the level of education that people expect of our schools. It's a big challenge. And, and um, and it falls on your shoulders. So, so thanks. And other than that, I just also would like to actually address the concerns that were raised about community input, about big decisions that are happening. Um, we are trying to wrap up the draft uh, portion of our strategic planning work that's been underway for quite some time now. It's an S A U wide effort that will next move to the schools. So there will be opportunities for much broader input for, for how the strategic plan gets operationalized. Uh, so far what's happened is the steering committee has developed a set of draft goals that are currently being reviewed school by school as, as go, um, go through this month. Trying to get, expand and teacher feedback and support staff feedback and administrator feedback about the sort of high level goals that have been developed in four areas. Academic, student support, organizational effectiveness and facilities. Um, our target is to be able to have a public meeting on, on those draft goals um, to present the vision work that was done by a community based committee on portrait of a graduate or portrait of a learner. We're still not even sure how we're gonna phrase that. Uh, and then on those high level goals. So um, once we do that, once we get sort of a final thumbs up from the public, uh, and we take into account any additional input that folks have, we'll at least have a structure for the schools to employ when thinking about uh, some of these big questions about where are we going with our programming? And what do we want to do with sort of our social emotional support that we're providing in our schools? And then these even bigger questions coming down, down the line, they transcend septic systems. Like what are we doing in general with facilities? Um, and, and so sort of behind the scenes without much fanfare, I know there's a, we, we have a building um, condition assessment, a facilities condition assessment that's going on right now with a, a big firm that's actually been hired by both the city of Boston and the entire state of Vermont. Uh, we, we got in there before the, the state of Vermont engagement. And are in the process of getting that work done right now, again, to provide data for that facility subcommittee to work with. Uh, we also have a salary study going on right now for non-instructional positions or non, non-uni, non-instructional. To benchmark our salary scales uh, for each type of position that we have. So and that would feed the, the work that's going on with the organizational subcommittee. So a lot going on and we're hopeful that when this process is done, that we'll have pretty clear guidance for, for the next at least five years and then a process that we can renew uh, as time goes on. So the decisions don't seem random, but there's actually a direction that we're headed in, the place that we're getting to. And uh, this has been a, a frustrating goal for me for three years. Uh, but I, I really am seeing some light at the end of the tunnel here. And I, I think we'll have something that we can, we can all agree is a, a good, a good uh, roadmap going forward. So look for that end of January for that public meeting.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for, thank you for all you're doing to lead that process to church. It's underway. Back to Jamie. Do you have more of this ministry?
I have, I have nothing. You don't have a financial? I, I looked at trying to do those for today. I but we have financials. Um, would you ask it in your arms?
Great. Thank you very much. And thanks for all the other work and presentations. Uh, last item uh, in our communications report is called committee reports. Um, I will just note that uh, as I have before, we're in the midst of negotiations. So the teachers, we are at the point of fact finding report and are working um, with Fact Finder to uh, come to uh, the next stage of that process. Uh, it probably will still be at least uh, one to two months off before we have, I don't know, at least two months off, I guess, before we have that report back from Fact Finder. So um, that will um, probably put us right up to around town meeting day before we see that. So that's the current status of that. And then we are uh, working with the support staff to try and uh, begin meeting with them, uh, having exchanged uh, uh, some emails to several preliminary times to schedule to. I do not think there are other committees meeting at this point. So um, obviously the budget committee, which is uh, briefed out uh, information as well. So uh, without any other order. Oh, sorry. Lisa.
Um, I just wondered, do you mean want to have the people who received the grants come and present to us at some point? Doesn't that normally?
Yeah.
Does that normally, doesn't that normally happen now?
It's usually later in
Later in the year, okay.
June time.
Okay.
I mean, have they even, have they completed some of theirs?
Some of them, I mean, that, that did them over the summer.
Okay.
Like there were summer, there were summer.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
You may well have sort of that present, but certainly reports are provided, so usually.
It, it just occurred to me, I'm looking at Lily like, yeah, we, did we, did we make sure that happened?
We do, and it's sometimes one, but after town meeting day, we think, slow down.
It is, okay, okay, thank you, sorry, just wanted to make sure we didn't let that slip by.
Yes, thank you. Derek, okay. All right, I do not think we have a need for an executive session. Uh, I had a preference earlier.
I would appreciate having other things we spoke about last month, we did a session.
I can publicly share that I have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow with, um, with the Harvard Superintendent.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So.
That, that was great.
All right, and as we decided earlier, um, we do not have need for a vote on this return here, so. I think unless board members think there's anything else, uh, I would, uh, welcome any agenda topics for the next meeting. Both, uh, the next one's really just gonna be covering the budget. I think we'll have plenty to discuss on the seventeenth. It'll be budget plus, uh, what Jamie finds out and whether or not we move forward with the proposal for the warrant article. Um, and then our next regular meeting will be back to the, uh, normal schedule, which is the first Wednesday of the month. And that would be, uh, February, well, February first, actually. So that is our next regular meeting on the meeting of Tuesday, January seventeenth, six thirty. So that is all I have, and I'd be happily entertaining adjournments, uh, in motion. Lily, did you?
Uh, sure. Uh, move to adjourn at eight, uh, from eight to ten.
Second line. Lisa, all those in favor? Emma, thank you, everyone. And thank you everyone online for participating.